Good morning. We'll call this meeting to order with a hearing on the burn ban. Manager Swingle, you want to introduce the subject?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Public hearing is on ordinance number 2021-002 and proclamation restricting open and controlled burns in the unincorporated area of Sierra County. This is an ordinance that the Commission generally considers every year whether they want to actually impose the restrictions or not. Due to the environmental factors that we're dealing with this year and the drought, things are pretty dry out there this year around the county, as well as southern New Mexico. The ordinance calls for restricting burning, you know, campfires, large campfires, open burns, burning the vegetation, things of that nature. There's still a mechanism to do those burns, it's just you go through a permit process, notifying the county of what you want to do. There's a discussion made, consensus developed on whether the permit should be issued or not, and they generally are, because most people just have to have the safety features in place to execute the burn safely under these conditions. And it's, the counties had, I think, this ban in place virtually every year that I've been here, and I think many years prior to that. If this ordinance is approved in today's commission meeting, it would take effect immediately just due to the exigent circumstances. I don't know if our emergency services director would like to make a comment on the ordinance or not. Paul, I know Paul did talk to his fire chiefs and developed consensus from them whether they wanted us to move forward with it, and I think the answer was yes.
Mr. Thule?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this was passed all the fire departments, and of course, they might have the band around, but, you know, the fire safety business, but yes, they are all in compliance with this to make sure that we get this in play. And we usually put it in about an hour in the first of May every year just to tell we can get better weather conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Attorney Pito.
Before we turn this over to the public for the public hearing component of this, we normally have our fire chief or our EMO testify as to what the current indices show for the drought in this area.
Okay. Are you able to do that, Mr. Thule?
Yes.
Think about wearing a couple of hats.
Yes, sir. In fact, all the indices right now are very, very dry, and it doesn't look like we're going to have anything for quite a while. So monitoring the situation in the forests, as well as on BLM land, most everything has gone to this extreme position, and I think this would just kind of put us ahead of the curve for a few weeks until it even gets a little, as we move into the summertime, it's even going to get worse. So at this time, we're definitely recommending that you put this in play.
So is our fire danger in high or very high right now?
I think we're very high.
Very high, yes, yeah. Which means if a little grass fire gets out of control, there's not much catching it.
Yeah, that's true. Right now, everything is, you know, your one-hour fuels are absolutely a tinderbox, so anything that happens on the surface side that's in the light grasses or anything is going to take off, especially if we get any windy conditions.
Yeah. And the Forest Service is planning some prescribed burns up in Indian Peaks?
Yeah, they have 10,000 acres they're getting ready, and they actually, I believe, are starting tomorrow on that.
And they're burning with rigid boundaries and a lot of black around them, so they've worked on that for a couple of years now, and it looks pretty good for them.
And they've been very good at making sure that they're update my office so that we can get that information out on our site, so just, the biggest thing we get is when we have smoke in the area, and then that's when the phones always start ringing, so we try to get that information out as quick as we can for them.
Good. Anything else, Commissioners? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul. Any calls yesterday, Mickey? I burned my last pile of brush on the farm.
Two.
Two. That's better than 30, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Do we have any public that wants to comment on the consideration of the burn ordinance? Sheriff, go right ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just a question, because my office normally around this time of year when this goes into effect, we fend off a lot of calls or receive a lot of calls from the public, specifically our agricultural industry down south when it comes to their burning. Does this prohibit them from engaging in that operation or those burns down there?
No. The only thing this really does is just to notify us so that we can get all the information, relay it to the local fire chief, and get that information to dispatch. And then that way, when weather permitting, we usually try to get it about 24 hours ahead of time, weather permitting, then all they do is they go then call dispatch, dispatch lines up to make sure they have that permit from us, and then they allow them to do their burn, and then they call back like normal to let us know that they are finished.
So there is, Mr. Chairman, there is a permit that is required?
And an approval process, so in case we were having a red flag day, a permission might be denied until suitable weather came. But yeah, there still is an agricultural exemption to go through the process and still be able to burn, and it's really not too hard to work through. It does require getting concurrence and notifying dispatch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I stand in support of this.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
To be clear, there's no cost for that permit, they just called the dispatch, and dispatch authorizes them to move forward.
No, the permit actually goes through the ESO.
It goes through the ESO, I'm sorry.
They notify dispatch when they're going to burn.
Gotcha, thank you.
And then it's Tuesday 24-hour notice, Paul, is that correct?
I believe that is the bird beach in there. We like to have them call like the day before just to, so we can get it planned, we can notify everybody that needs to be notified, and then, of course, we can check the weather to make sure that is the correct bird. And most everybody has been very cordial about that, most of the time. They call early enough, and we know it's going to be a good day, say maybe today, but it's going to be bad tomorrow, we may pull a few strings there to try to squeeze them in, but usually all are notified before it's ever started.
Is there any other public comment?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the county has not received any emails or communications that would like to be read in the record.
Okay, great. Commissioners, any thoughts? Can we call this hearing to an end, hearing no further action or comment? So we'll close the hearing, we'll start our meeting in five minutes at 10 o'clock. We'll call this meeting of the Sierra County Commission of Tuesday, April 20th, 2021, to order. It's great to see a full gallery out there. Welcome, everyone. Clerk Tre Hill, would you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Paxton?
Here.
Commissioner Day?
Here.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Here.
Also in attendance, County Manager Swingle, County Attorney Pito, and Clerk Tre Hill.
And we want to welcome Serena Bartu, who's going to be our interim county manager. We're glad to have you with us today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You bet. Manager Swingle is one of your last things, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I'd be honored.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and the symbol of perfect friendship among united churches.
This is Manager Swingle's last meeting, and he's going to transition to the City of Truth or Consequences as their manager. We will address a little of that further on in the meeting, but we're glad to have this opportunity to see you off today, but appreciate all your work.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
And Serena, we really appreciate you coming and filling in in the interim to get us through a critical time, getting our budget in and some other things that we've got going, so we're glad to have you back in the house.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We've got a lot of guests here, I'm not sure if I can get around to everybody. Sheriff Hamilton's with us, and the Lees are here from misdemeanor compliance and the detention center, and we have the treasurer's office with us, and, let's see, Billy Neely and some of the road crew are here, and Sierra County Dispatch Mickey Atwell, and our flood manager Travis Atwell, and we have deputy chief with us from the city, welcome, Erica Baker. Am I missing anybody? Oh, Ernie's back there. You know, you were hiding behind George's head, so. This really is great to see a more normal meeting. The public is still with us online, we're broadcasting through a number of outlets, but KCHS is gracious in hosting us on YouTube and on local radio and Channel 371, so we appreciate that and hope there are a lot of folks out there tuning in. Today's a busy day. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Moved in second, did a roll call, Shelley?
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion is approved. I've got, looking at the minutes, the minutes of the March 16th, 2021 meeting, the second page on the Board of Fin- page on the Board of Finances, Item 6, it says move to approve November reconciliation. I believe that should be February reconciliation. And I don't, I didn't find anything else. That was my fine-tooth comb getting through. So is there a motion on approval of minutes?
Move to approve the minutes from the regular meeting and two special meetings as amended.
Second. Moved in second. Did a roll call, Shelley?
Commissioner Paxson.
Yes.
Commissioner Day.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion is approved. Manager Swingle, have we received any public comment to share?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we have not.
Is there any public that wishes to comment in the gallery? Seeing none, we'll move on. The consent agenda, do we need discussion or is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve, consent agenda, Items A through G as presented.
A second. Moved in second. Did a roll call, Shelley?
Commissioner Paxson.
Yes.
Commissioner Day.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion is approved. Department reports, are you going to start off, Manager Swingle?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'd love to. This being my last last meeting, just kind of like to summarize a few things. The county staff, you have an amazing staff here. They're very public service oriented, and I'm going to miss every one of them very much transitioning to the city. Just a class staff. Everybody works with everybody to get the job done. You don't see that in a lot of places. Everybody's kind of siloed. They have one job and they do that job, and that's literally it. That doesn't happen in Sierra County. Everybody, it's kind of all hands on every project to get things accomplished, and that will continue. I have no doubt that will continue. It's just in the nature of the individuals that you have on board. The county will be left in good hands. I think Serena will do a fantastic job in the interim, and then she'll make a decision, I think, on whether she wants to even submit for the position or not. But, you know, that'll be her call. You've cast a very wide net as far as recruiting from El Paso. We're advertising El Paso, Las Cruces, of course, locally, the Albuquerque Journal as well, through the New Mexico Municipal League, as well as through the New Mexico counties, and then online through a basically a headhunting company online to advertise there as well. It is a very broad net, so I'm hoping that you'll have some very good, very good candidates that will submit their, you know, their resumes for consideration. We have the new building under construction right now. This is a game changer for Sierra County. You're pulling everybody into one house, basically, excluding the sheriff's department and the road department. However, I remember when I first got here, the sheriff's department was in this building that was just not suitable for them. The county was able to put them in, you know, to purchase a building, put them in the road department into one facility, and that's going to last them for the foreseeable future. Great site for them. But all the other offices are going to be pulled into the new building, and it's going to be a one-stop shop for the public. There's nothing worse than having somebody come to this building and we have to send them to the Date Street property because they need to see the assessor, the treasurer, the clerk. Or conversely, they go to that building and they need to come to admin and talk to, you know, somebody here. So bringing everybody into one facility is really going to be an excellent public service for the for the community. The work that SmithCo is doing at the building is, it's, you know, it's absolutely as advertised. SmithCo is a class company. They're doing a fantastic job in the building, and I think the county and the community is going to be very happy with the end result when the project is complete. We've done very well with our legislative delegation in getting capital laid back to to this community in Sierra County over the years, done exceptionally well. And that will continue, I'm sure, with the legislative delegation and the commission's interest in advocating for for those projects in the future. I really can't say much more other than it's been a joy to work here for the last seven years. It's been a privilege to work with the commission, each and every one of you. It's been a privilege to work with, you know, the staff, the elected officials. Something I'll cherish for, you know, for the rest of my life. And I wish the county well and Godspeed in moving forward, and I know they will. Now I move on to the city, and they have some hurdles to get across, and I want to help them, help them do that. So thank you very much for the opportunity in the last seven years. I want to thank the staff. I love every one of them, and we just have a very good relationship, and that will continue. Even in my absence, we're still going to remain friends and in contact with one another.
Well, it's good you won't be far because we've got your phone number, and we'll beat a track to your office when we need to.
Yeah, I'm literally moving across the street. So it's not, not that big a deal.
It's a small town.
I know there's some individual departments that have reports for you, and Virginia's handed out her report for the commissioners, and now that we're open, they can give their own updates to the commission. But it's been a privilege working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, Bruce.
Well, Virginia, not dropping names, but come on up.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Manager, we're going to miss you, Bruce. Good luck in your new endeavors.
Thank you.
Can we still call you? I want this on record. Your report in front of you has mostly information. The stats today, we have, we've had one since then. We have 55 in custody right now. We have 49 in Luna, two in Socorro, and four in the Department of Corrections because they have additional behavior health needs that can't be taken care of by local agencies. Our stats last month, you have a breakdown there. Our DWI arrests are up. There were seven last month. Our budget has gone up because our arrests have gone up. They went down significantly during COVID, but they are creeping back up, and the arrests are back up also. So you can see because of that, our bills are back up, and we spent quite a bit of money last month on housing. Because of that is actually one of the reasons we started looking into all these grants because the people with behavior health issues would be better served going to a program that'll help them with their issues rather than going into custody. And there's more information about the grants later on. Our quarterly restricted housing report, information is included. There was one this last quarter, which was January through March, and she was actually kept in medical department for one day, but we still had to report it because during that one day she did not get released, so she qualifies for being reported. She actually was given medication and was just being watched, so it was not anything unusual. And that information is reported here. Luna reported it, and we will report it also. And after that, report is the report from our Olive Tree about the three grants that they head up the behavior health services for us, the RISE, the COSAP, and the Biz Grant. And she has information about what they've been doing. On the last page, it's the breakdown of who's currently in treatment right now, what services. We have 41 active clients. We have nine in housing. And then it's a breakdown of how many are in MAT and how many had appointments and therapies, and how we help them, get them their personal IDs and other things we do to assist them. And when the Biz Grant, because we did not spend all of the funds, they've asked us to try and come up with ideas to spend the rest of the funding. So we were looking at possibly starting a crisis response team, and they will give us the money to give us the position to get that started. And it would be following the model of the state. We have the state people involved that will be coming down and showing us what they want us to do, how it's going to be run. We're going to try and get everybody in the community involved. So we have the hospital involved, EMT, we'll call SCRTA in. So there'll be call-out lists and the officers on scene. Depending on what type of crisis it is, we'll probably just be able to call SCRTA. They'll have the call-out list if this all works the way the model goes. We can also apply for additional funds just for this. That's the last section. The request for application, the Human Services Department has a new grant that's open right now for law enforcement assisted diversion and pre-arrest so that they can intervene in a crisis, and we can have a program set up through this funding to send them to a detox or an inpatient treatment and services in lieu of going to either the hospital or jail. But law enforcement do need to be involved because if they do cross the line, they absolutely will go to jail. So there's information about this grant, which we would like permission to apply also. This person who is heading up this is also in charge of our RISE grant. So we know the people running this, and it will be funded for $1,000 to $200,000, depending on what services that we think we need. But so I have all this information in front of you, and I will stand for questions.
Questions, Commissioners? Thank you, Virginia. Lots to consider. We'll have to digest it and get back to you. And if there are funding opportunities, we'll need to bring those before the commission. So that's good.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just incidentally, the 41 inmates you're talking about that are in the program, if those people were incarcerated and they're incarcerated for the year, that's about $1.3 million in incarceration costs that the county would absorb, not including any medical costs that were related to those individuals. So it's a very worthwhile program for the county to continue to work and pursue.
Mr. Lee, misdemeanor compliance, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager. It's nice to be back. I missed this. First, let me start by saying I've worked, I've been in public service since I was 16 years old, and I've had many, many supervisors and managers throughout the military, even when I was a kid, working for the recreation department in San Diego. So many, so many people I've worked for, military, law enforcement, one time with the postal service. And I can tell you, as far as leaders and leadership go, it has been such a great experience working with Bruce. He's made, he made it such an easy transition for me from law enforcement to what at the time was just the DWI program coordinator. And he was there when we contracted the program, then drew it again, and it's been easy. And so I have so much respect for him as a leader, and I know you all do too. So anyhow, in our programs, in DWI compliance, currently we have 54 people on DWI probation. That's growing weekly now that the courts are open, and I expect it to grow every week by three or four as convictions start to come in because they're now going to trial. And that, by the way, a wonderful coworker of mine, Vanessa Segura, runs the DWI program and does an amazing job. Excuse me. Then we have misdemeanor compliance, and that is Sandra Lucero's job. She's also the administrative assistant. She's also doing, she does pre-prosecution diversion, and we now are doing mental health court, and I'll just give you a little tidbit on that here in a little bit. But from day one, just as I had Bruce to support me, I had Sandra to support me and to train me, and I want you guys all to know how, just what a great person to work with they both are. And we have one more, Brittany Flora, who is over at the office taking care of stuff for us. So misdemeanor compliance, currently we have 38 on misdemeanor compliance. As these trials and court cases are adjudicated, that number's going to be growing. Pre-prosecution diversion, Sandra currently has two. Now, the next one, mental health court, we have a whopping one client. That's a victory. This, two years ago, more or less, discussions with Bruce, discussions with Judge Brown, we found the need to have a behavioral health court, and it's taken us two years to get there. And we recognized, you have, I had to have these, this paradigm shift because to me, I always wanted to just lock them all up. But the reality is, and the data shows, that if we are patient, and if we continue to work with people, and if we continue to give them opportunity through behavioral health court, it's taken an average of seven times for them to get on, to start, for the light bulb for them to start to come on. And so we now have our first client, and there are going to be breakthroughs, and there are going to be breakdowns, but, and that's also Sandra's program as well. I have a fancy title, Behavioral Health Court Manager, which really means nothing other than I supervise the contract for treatment. Sandra really supervises me, actually. Anyhow, so it's a good thing. It is. And I can tell you, and it's not easy. Of the 41 people, if that's how, I don't know, how many are in custody today, Ms. Lee? If we have 55 in custody, there is a good chance 40 of those are in custody for violations of their conditions of release. Because until they start, and we are now ordering people who are released on pre-trial conditions of release to go to treatment with our authority, with their authority as compliance officers. So, and then they get re-arrested, and then they go back to jail, and I get that. I'm fine with that. If they're not complying, then they need to be dealt with, if that's, if that's politically correct word. So anyhow, in pre-trial compliance, now we're at 217. During the pandemic, it actually, well, we're still in the pandemic, it grew to 220. Those are cases that have not been adjudicated in court, and Ms. Brittany Flora is supervising all of them. And I got to tell you, she is kicking butt and taking names, and she's giving people chances. That's how serious, and it's all, as we all know, related to, I'll say substance use first, followed by behavioral health issues. However, you can only tell somebody two or three times with using. If they test positive before, they're going to end up back in front of Judge Brown or one of our district court judges, and they're going to end up back in jail. So like I say, there's breakthroughs and there's breakdowns. But the one thing that's important to me is if they re-offend while they're out for, if they're stealing, if they're involved in violence, as far as I'm concerned, that's zero tolerance. If you guys are going to use your dope, use your dope. We're going to give you a couple of chances. But if you're involved in anything that's going to hurt the community beyond your own self-abuse and supporting the system that, through which they get their drugs, they need to be in jail, and then the courts can deal with them again. So I really think that's about it. Like I say, I'm hopeful that the behavioral health court can make a difference, but time will tell. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll stand for questions.
Questions, Commissioners? Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I think it's really important to note, going forward, that the misdemeanor compliance program, they're dealing with a lot of at-risk people, and same thing with the grants that are being managed out of the detention center. If everybody that was in that program went through the first time and was fully recovered, that would be exceptional. That's not reality. It's ongoing, and there will be backslides of individuals. However, over time, if we don't lose faith in them, we keep them, and that's half of the role that the county manager plays with misdemeanor compliance, is keeping their head up, their chin up, that they may have had a loss, somebody, you know, was reincarcerated again, that's okay. That's okay. It's going to happen. Don't lose faith. Keep marching forward. Keep running the program, and eventually, some people are going to get it. Some never will. But we're going for the people that can be salvaged, and that needs to be, that needs to continue. Don't get frustrated as a commission that people are being reincarcerated. It takes time, and we are really in our infancy still with all of the programs in Sierra County. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll keep moving forward. That's the only, only direction we can go. So thank you for all of your efforts. That's good. County Treasurer, Ms. Chavis, would you like to bring us up to date?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Bruce. So sad to see you go, but happy to see you in the city as well.
Thank you.
Not leaving us completely. And we're really happy Serena's coming on board, especially budget time and all of that, so perfect. Our property tax collection, as of Friday, April 16th, we're at 78%. And for 2020, we've been steady throughout the second half of tax collection. Delinquent notices will begin running in the paper this Friday for the next three weeks, and taxes will be considered delinquent as of May 11th, and penalty and interest will accrue. Please make sure to have your taxes in before that date. We will send out delinquent postcards this year as a friendly reminder to come visit the treasurer's office at 100 North Date Street, Suite 13.
Will you have cookies?
We'll have Kelly Kay make them for us, right? Yeah. We do have candy.
Well, hopefully we'll get those paid so we can continue on, but thank you.
That's right.
Any questions, Commissioners?
Okay.
Thank you, Candace. Ernie, you're hiding back there. Come tell us what's happening with maintenance. Come tell us what's happening with maintenance.
Sheriff, commissioners, I got, did I show you this?
Sure.
Here's some pictures of, we had a little roof issue in the clerk's office. The back door was open when those dust devils came through and kind of sucked that ceiling up and set it down. Well, that section that fell didn't have any wires supporting it.
Oh, gee.
So we went in, took care of it right away. We didn't use any new materials, other than we put some new wire up the proper way. And all that was the material that had fallen. We've got it back together. Other than that, we got some parking lot lights we put up at the sheriff's department. They're LED solar lights to do away with those ones that are there. There's, they got some electrical issues, they're older than heck, so we just want to try and step it up a little bit, use less power there. I'm going to try to eventually get some more to put on the building, to face down around it, so we have a little more light there. But I'll work on that with the new budget. Other than that, we've just been keeping up with maintenance and keeping weeds and stuff down. I'll stand for any questions.
Questions, commissioners? Thank you, Ernie.
And Bruce, it's going to be sad to see you go.
Thank you very much, Ernie. I'm going to miss you all. What a class group in facility management. They just do an outstanding job, day in and day out, and able to salvage the material. And looking at the photos, I didn't think it was possible. Fantastic work, Ernie.
Thank you.
Thank you. Billy Neely, come tell us about roads. Good morning.
Mr. Chair, commissioners. Bruce?
Morning.
Nice working with you. One way to put it. Well, we've just been busy with some regular maintenance. We've been getting a little bit behind because of, we had an issue with the blade being stolen about three weeks ago, and it ended up in the river with a broken hydraulic line and ran dry for quite a while, so we're trying to take it easy on it for right now. We have it parked, so we're going to get it looked at by Caterpillar up in Albuquerque. So we're kind of getting a little bit behind on some of our maintenance in the B District, but we'll work around that here shortly. We replaced two cattle guards out in Engle that were pretty well overdue for repair. We had a stolen vehicle, I guess, wreck into one of them, and take out one of the A-frames off to the side. So I just decided we better just go ahead and change them both. They were both old timber cattle guards that have been, been there for years, so the first one had a pretty good ramp on it. You could hit it pretty fast and catch some air, so we cut all that down and made it a lot more level, a little safer, anyway. We've been prepping for the last three weeks, a couple of, about two miles of roads, four different roads for re-chipping with some of our project money. Pretty much have them all ready to go. Just, I think it's June 20th, somewhere around there, we're going to be re-chipping everything. We're still waiting on a little bit of project money for school bus and cap from, for Pertsia Road. That was all due because of an archaeology survey that we had to get done, so we're just really waiting on paperwork through the state, which should be here any time, so we can start proceeding with Pertsia. It's going to be a lot of work, some big culverts, some water crossings, and base course, almost a whole mile, and we'll be chipping it with two coats of chips. When do you think all that will start, Billy? Any day. I mean, we're actually just waiting on the email saying we got the money, really, just so we can proceed. And we've already started hauling culverts out there and kind of prepping for it, but so, any day, as soon as we get the okay, we're, we'll be getting ready to get it done. And I guess, other than that, I stand for questions.
Questions, commissioners? How did they steal the blade? Did they hotwire it, or what did they do?
It's a common key. A cat key can pretty much start any cat piece of equipment, so.
God, that's scary, isn't it?
It is, yes, sir. And if somebody knows what they're doing, we shut master switches off every night, but if somebody knows what they're doing, they're not that hard to figure out, so. Yes, sir.
I looked at the, I call it the Inman Hill, that out of Winston going towards St. Cloud. Boy, that chip seal's holding good.
It is.
And it's getting a lot of traffic.
It is, yeah.
I think there was four trucks came by Sunday.
Right.
It's a day you don't expect. Of course, they run seven days a week out there, but.
They do, and I, you know, on average, there's six trucks a day, at the very least, that run through that road, so it takes a pretty good pounding.
Yeah. Good job on that.
Thank you.
I think we'll expect the same on the others, and we know you'll deliver. Appreciate the work you're doing out there.
Appreciate it.
Yep. All right. Skirda, Mickey, you got an update? You want to tell us what's happening on your part of the building? Anything that's going on?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, Bruce, I'd say I'm kind of sad to see you go, but I still get you with the city now that he's going to, he'll still be part of Skirda.
Yeah.
So I'm very excited to still be able to work with Bruce. I mean, he's a huge supporter of Skirda and has been a mentor in a lot of questions and has helped me a lot in the last almost six years, so, you know, I'll see you in a couple of weeks, I guess. So at Skirda, we have a Skirda board meeting tomorrow, 10 o'clock. My board will approve final budget so we can get it turned into the county on time. As far as the building, it's getting really exciting now. The generator will be delivered, if not at the end of the month, the beginning of next month. They've already started working on the foundation, the wiring, all the generator stuff, and it's a big one coming. So, and that should be complete in several weeks. Our new radio tower is going to be on the road, May 6th, will be delivered to the site, and within the next couple of weeks, that's going to be erected, and you'll, you're going to start seeing that big tower behind the building. So I've met with a lot of contractors, and it's going, I'm sure some people have already been there. You can actually see the birth of Skirda when you walk in with the frames up. You can see the offices, the dispatch. My dispatchers are, I mean, excited to see that new 911 communication center that's about to just bring out everything better, and, you know, for Sierra County. I've worked closely with Jocelyn and Bruce and everybody, and everybody's just been great, giving Skirda this opportunity to just be the best that it can. We have a lot of major advancement coming into this new center. Top of the line, you know, the most advanced security systems, cameras, door swipes, everything in there. We'll be able to monitor the outside of the buildings and such, including the inside of the hallways. So that's 24/7 that you'll have security inside of the building, not just Skirda, but the whole county building. So we're pretty excited.
Great.
I don't have anything else.
And that's a 100-foot tower, so we'll be able to see it. It'll be a landmark.
It'll be about 70 foot above the building, so you'll see it behind, it'll be behind where Skirda is located. Generator's kind of off to the side up in the front area. So, but the plan is they're going to build a fence and all of that, that's part of it. Those are the, part of the 911 funds are paying for the generator. So that's zero out of any of the county or Skirda's pocket right there. That was $138,000, that project, the grant that I submitted. So, and everything will be new, except the 911 system is already new. I'm already in the talks and contracts with the state's going to pay for the moving of the equipment, and I'm working with their technicians where there is the possibility, no guarantees, that we may not lose 911 in the county when we move the equipment. One of the techs, who's an expert on the Airbus system, the Vesta system, says we may be able to bring half to the new building and still have half working at the older building until we do a complete transition over. So it's kind of a tricky, tricky kind of thing when you switch a whole 911 center from one building to the other. So the consoles have gone into production. Those are the brand-new dispatch consoles that are going in. That was also a 911 grant that is being paid for. Company out of Colorado came down, did the final measurements, including the carpet that you can't pronounce. So, does that have?
Great. Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mickey. Flood manager, Atwell, you got a message for us this morning?
Bruce, it's been good working for you, and I'll still be working for you with the city.
That's right.
We completed repairs in Palomas, and we've now moved equipment into San Miguel. Billy had a spot on the road we're doing, and then we're going to try to do a little bit of work inside the channel, and then from there, we're going to move into the upper Cachillo area. So right now, once we hit that, we would hit every drainage in the county this year.
Wow.
So we're making good progress. Building permits are still very active between TRC, Elephant Butte, and the county. So I'm getting at least four to five a week right now. So contractors are busy. Good news, I've got an official letter from Homeland Security. Cachillo Negro Project passed all audits. So the next step now is they've submitted it back to FEMA because they have to do an increase in the reimbursement for our actual expenses. I know the auditors were having an issue with that, saying that we weren't going to get reimbursed. We are getting reimbursed 100%.
Good.
So that's all I've got.
Okay.
Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Travis.
Thank you, Travis.
Deputy Chief Baker, did you wish to approach the commission with any issues or areas of cooperation?
She's on the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, that's great.
Then she can say everything she wants.
We'll hold you till you come up. Sheriff Hamilton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Bruce?
Sheriff.
Man, what can I say about Bruce? If you would indulge me just for a minute. Last September, I completed my 25th year with Sierra County, and I've gone through almost as many, well, as many county managers as I have sheriffs. Hands down, no, no competition whatsoever, Bruce. You rose above all of them.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Not only what you brought to Sierra County, you know, when I, when I started representing Sierra County in the Board of Directors with New Mexico counties, I heard so much about Bruce Swingle and how lucky we were to get you as our, as our county manager. And I can tell you that those, those folks, I was optimistically skeptical at first because of the other county managers that we had. And I have to say that they knew you well up there, they knew your reputation, and you lived up to it 100%. It's been a pleasure. I'm, and on one sense, I'm glad to see that you're going to the city of TRC because I'm a resident of Truth or Consequences, and I'm glad to see that they've got somebody over there that is going to deal with some of the issues that we're having in the city. And I look forward to working with you, just as a citizen of Truth or Consequences, to help get some of those, those things addressed. So it's been a pleasure. I look, I look forward to many more years of working with you, so.
Thank you, Sheriff. That's very kind of you.
I don't have a lot to report on the sheriff's side. We're fully staffed. Next month, Deputy Folkerson is scheduled to graduate the Law Enforcement Academy, so we'll have him out and working for the citizens of Sierra County up in no time. We were fortunate enough to hire a certified officer from the Caballo State Parks area, so he's just about to complete his field training program, and he'll be out there on his own, working for the citizens as well. We're clicking along, getting ready to start our pre-budget workshop this week and there at the, at the office, and looking forward to working with the interim county manager, Serena Bar Two. Welcome back, Serena. It's going to be a pleasure. I'll stand for any questions. Wait, if I could add, just one more thing. All of those bad law enforcement bills that we talked about, other than HB4, all of them failed. They all, they all either died in committee or didn't get called to the floor during the 60-day session. I know they're going to rear their ugly little head again in the 30-day session this next year, so we'll be prepared to continue to fight those. But all, all seven of those, of those really terrible law enforcement bills that would have technically clipped our wings and made us ineffective out there, all of them failed, and I'm delighted to be able to report that to you.
Thankful for that. Questions, commissioners?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
We have a New Mexico State Police Representative, Patrolman Blaylock? Blacklock? Blackrock? Would you like to address the commission in any way, sir?
No, I'm just geared up to her.
We appreciate you being with us. We're glad to have you.
Thank you.
All in one piece, too.
Yeah. I think that's all the department heads, isn't it? Bruce, am I missing anybody?
Mr. Chairman, this is one of those, commissioners, this is one of those rare opportunities where our finance director is actually in attendance. She's usually busy.
She was hiding behind Virginia as well. Learned that from Ernie.
I think she would like to save her comments till the budget workshop.
Okay, great. Great. Well, glad to have you with us, Becky.
But it's good that she's here.
Yep. Well, commissioners, do you have any reports?
No.
I just have a short one, and Bruce, you may help with this. We had two meetings with Sacred Winds last week. Sacred Winds is the one that's doing our, our, is it fiber optic downed array?
Yes.
Getting those schools where the kids can actually communicate and get online in a, in a partnership, although that's Texas El Paso Electric. Working very closely with Denise Barrera at the Sierra Electric Co-op. They have huge plans for Sierra County. They are such a energetic, visionary, futuristic group, and they chose Sierra County to break ground on, on some new technology. They started out on the Navajo Nation doing microwave sites so that they could go to Hogans and small houses and have internet and phone, actually go into those houses on the Navajo Reservation on the New Mexico side. Were very successful. They've started out in that area along I-40 west of Grants. They came to us, and now they want to make Sierra County so that we can have all of our, our households, even in the far-flung ranch area to the west of Winston and up into the Alamosa country of Socorro and Beaverhead area of Katron County, and have Wi-Fi in every home. And it's going to be an aggressive time. They're making some huge investments in Sierra County, so we're really glad to have John Bedal and Sacred Winds with us, and they're going to be hiring employees and putting in a communication site and a local office, and we just really look forward to having them with us. Bruce, you want to expand on that any?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Yeah, I think it's really important that the entire commission hear the presentation. I think it will be a much more abbreviated presentation than what we heard last week, but we're going to have them on the agenda for next month at the commission meeting to talk to you all. And they have received a little over $8 million in grant funding between Sacred Wind and Sierra Electric Co-op, and Sacred Wind has ponied up about $2 million, a little over $2 million, into the, of their own money into the project. This first phase is everything south of TRC in Williamsburg to basically the county line and west. So Los Palomas, Caballo, Array, Hillsboro, Kingston, those areas, Anamis, that is the first phase to provide internet service, broadband service to them in the very near future. We talked to them about the, the funding that they need to move forward. I mean, we still, the county was in a position to submit a grant when we defined where that grant should be and for the appropriate funding, that it's not as easy as you've got a band, a broadband gap in service in a community, and we can go find a grant and, and install broadband in that community. There's, there's property rights and territories that, that companies have first ride over. There's others, if they say they provide a certain speed and service in an area, that, you know, that means they cover that whole area. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of work that has to be done to find the right grant, and working with Sacred Wind, the county will, will actually accomplish that in time with the partnership with Sacred Wind and, and Sierra Electric Co-op. Very excited. Very excited about that for the community. And I think you're going to be really impressed with what they have going on and what the vision is for this community. And you'll hear that next month.
The only thing I have against them is if they're taking one of our employees.
They are. They didn't acknowledge who they were going to hire in this community, but it's found out yesterday. Paul Tully has submitted his resignation to the county, and he's been hired. You know by the talent that you met in the meetings we had with them. They hire exceptional people and talented people in their company. Come to find out from Paul, this has been a very long process of meetings and dialogue that he's had with them for close to a year. In working with Sacred Wind to approach him and offer him a position, Paul wears a number of hats for the county, and many of them he doesn't get paid for, such as IT work that he does. A lot of people don't remember that he had a broadband or an internet business here in town. He's quite suited for that work. And I hate to see him leave. Love to have had him stay with the county or even possibly move him to the city if the vacancy. He can fill a lot of gaps, an awful lot of gaps. But, you know, you always, you want all of your staff to do well, and you want them to make the decisions in their best interest for their future. So, kudos to Paul. He will be sorely missed in the government, Sierra County, as well as with TRC. But congratulations on your new position. And he starts, I believe, on the 7th or thereabout, May 7th.
Well, the cat's out of the bag now, huh?
Hello, is this thing live?
I think they're going to get a tremendous asset, Paul, and we'll miss you. We look forward to working with you on the broadband side and especially coordinating progress in the county. That's so important. So, appreciate what you've done here. We look forward to visiting in the future.
Thank you.
We'll call you when Debbie's TV quits working. Mr. Manager, we've got presentation of years of service certificates?
We do, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, commissioners, this is an opportunity the county takes to recognize the amazing employees that we have. We haven't done it the last year because of the pandemic. We didn't bring staff into the commission meetings and recognize them out of respect for the public health order. Now that things are opening up, we're starting the process again. And very excited. We have quite a few people that we're going to recognize today. The first one being Bill Neely, who's completed one year as Road Department Director Superintendent. Billy, come on up.
Come on up, Billy. Congratulations. Mr. Chair, you went ahead and had the certificate. I sure did. And you'll have to run the document here, Billy. Come on over, let's get a picture, Billy. You know, I was teasing Billy the other day. I said, "Did you ever get on a piece of equipment anymore?" And he went, "Oh, yeah." We took the best equipment operator in the county and made him a manager. And you've done really well, Billy. And I'm glad you still get on an equipment every once in a while. Keep doing the managing. Thank you very much.
Just a couple of comments about Billy. Billy, you know, he's been the road director, road superintendent for a year now. He's done exceptionally well. He's learning all the processes. There's nothing more difficult and challenging than trying to understand the Department of Transportation and all of the nuances and documentation requirements and timelines for every project. He's learning it, he's learning it very well. I don't think the county could be more pleased than Billy's performance. Now, with respect to him and getting on equipment, every year, the counties have a road deal. And the counties bring their best equipment operators from around the state to this event. And they participate in these competitions. And you'll go to Albuquerque, you know, they'll bring like 14, 15, 18 people. Santa Fe will have 10. All these counties will have all these people. So, how many Sierra County bringing? One. Well, you don't expect to win this, do you? We brought 18. So, we only brought the best. We only brought the best to this event. And Billy does win a lot of events. He's highly skilled. It was kind of unusual to take your best operator and make them the supervisor. But, you know, the hope is in the long-term benefit is everything that he knows, his skills, he's teaching everyone else in the organization.
That's right.
So, it's a great privilege to have him here. The next one is Neil Faulkner. Neil completed two years of service with the Road Department. Josie, Josie Holly, has completed four years with the county. I thought about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Josie. Yep. Glad to have you.
Candy, would you like to make any comments?
Yes, Josie has been with the treasurer's office before, whenever I first started, and then we got her back. We stole it from Shelley, sorry, Joe. And, but, yeah, she's doing a fantastic job, knows the processes, loves people. She's in the perfect line, so we enjoy having her.
Thank you. The next employee we have is Travis Atwell. And Travis has completed five years as Road Director for Sierra County.
Flood manager, Travis.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Do them floods. Keep them out of town, but bring rain, will you? Thank you, Travis.
Travis is another one of those employees. He's very much like Paul Tully in the sense that he brings a lot of skill sets to the table, not just flood and flood plain management experience, but he brings a lot of other resources in emergency management and emergency services to the county. The communications and working with SCRTA on towers and technical issues that are way above my head. Travis is able to assist the county in so many ways. It's just a privilege to work with him, an honor. He does a fantastic job. You have an agreement on the agenda today that you'll be considering for both the emergency management services and flood services for Williamsburg. And I think that's just a credit to the skill sets that these individuals have. Thank you very much, Travis. The next employee is Courtney Armihoe. Courtney's completed five years of service with the assessor's office. Courtney's not here today.
She's with the clerk's office now?
Oh, clerk's office, I'm sorry. I forgot about the shift. Thank you. Next is Becky Mina. Becky's completed five years with the county.
So, is this the reason we got you in here today? Well, congratulations, Becky. We're glad to have you.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I've watched Becky grow for the last five years so much in finance. And she's always had a finance background, but it's a whole other game when you have the finance director responsibility for an entire county and just the crazy amount of funds and budgets that there are out there. She does a fantastic job. You wouldn't even know she's in the building. You have to go to her office and make sure that she's there and say hello, because she just is working nonstop. Fantastic individual, love her to pieces, and I'll definitely miss her. The next employee we have is Lake Nya, who has completed five years of service with the SCRTA Dispatch. I know she's not here.
She's a great hair dispatcher. CC. Thank you.
Thank you. You might as well stay here. The next employee is Keith Gonzalez. Keith's completed six years with SCRTA.
He's on the way, he's off right now, so.
Thank you.
Two wonderful people.
The next employee is Barbara Hill. She's completed six years of service with the sheriff's office. Six years already.
Six years. Thank you very much. To tell you how important Barbara is, she couldn't be here to receive this award today, because if I give her any time away from the front desk up there, my department just falls apart. She is the glue, truly, that keeps my department together. I recruited her, when I first met her, was when I first started working for the county, when she was managing Pixies. And I knew her all these years, and when I was elected sheriff, she was the only one that I would even consider for the job. I hear this from my guys all the time and from my, which is my entire staff, that she is the best administrative assistant that has ever been in the sheriff's office. She keeps me straight, and I know she even keeps admin straight. So, for that, I apologize, or I say, "You're welcome." But thank you again. I couldn't do it without her, and I'll make sure she knows how much she's appreciated.
Tell her, "Thank you."
I'll do that for sure.
Barbara does do an exceptional job. And I do, the sheriff, you know, he says it in jest to some extent, but that is such a critical position for the sheriff's department, and there's none better.
And I know she brings cookies.
She makes the best ham on earth. The next employee we have is Frederick Delgren. And Frederick has finished 11 years with the county, Road Department.
You as well, my friend. Fred, we appreciate you.
Yeah, nice to meet you.
Congratulations, Levin.
Fred's an awesome employee for mechanic, too. I mean, he does most of the work in our shop, so.
Not only does Fred provide all the mechanical work on the Road Department equipment and vehicles, but he does it for the entire county.
Yeah.
And that's a pretty good-sized fleet. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Fred.
And last but not least, Ernie Armihoe. And Ernie's completed 15 years of service.
So, what, do you think this is a career?
I think so.
We appreciate everything you do. You're Johnny on the spot anytime there's a problem, so appreciate you and your crew.
I hope you have a good crew.
Thank you. Virtually every commission meeting, I talk about the amazing things that Ernie and his staff, facility management, is doing for the county. He saves the county so much money in the work that they do, that they do in-house, that we really couldn't afford to do otherwise. He keeps our buildings functional and open. And anytime one of the offices has an issue, they're there to fix it right away. We have a lot of properties that three people have to take care of. I'm not sure if it's a blessing that we're going into one building and the staff will really, you know, how are they going to handle that? They're losing so many buildings, dated buildings, that have really required a lot of time and attention. So, you know, if nothing else, I'm glad we have the building for you all just so you don't have to deal with these 100-year-old buildings anymore.
We're going to appreciate it.
You'll still have plenty to do, I'm sure. Commissioners, would you all come down front? Hank, if you'll grab that. Bruce, we'd like you to come out in front here. Don't get any fingerprints on it.
Looks like a murder weapon.
Yeah, yes. Wow. Well, this is a farewell meeting to Bruce Swingle, county manager. He's been here just shy of seven years. And I think that there were challenges when you got here. You met all of those challenges, and you moved the county forward in such a positive way. Some of the comments we've heard with Keith, who's come up to do reports, talk about how county staff feels about you. It's more than just a working relationship. This really is a family atmosphere. And you've fostered that and cultured it in a lot of ways. So, we hope to continue that. And we're really glad that you're just across the street, because, you know, I told you, now, you're not working for the city yet, so you keep doing your county manager job. But when you go over there, it's okay for us to pester. Yeah. And so, this is with heartfelt gratitude. And I'll just, if my fellow commissioners want to add words, I'd sure appreciate it.
Well, I haven't been here long, but I appreciate all you've done for me and the county.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you very much.
You know, Bruce, I just want to say thank you for everything. Been in the commission for a little over two years now. And not a day have I had to worry about what's going on in the operations of the county because of your leadership. And so, thank you, and I'm sure I'll be calling you quite a bit at the city. I just appreciate all you do.
Thank you very much. It's been an honor to work here. Thank you, Sheriff. Commissioner, thank you.
Get in here and let's get a picture with Cheryl.
Couple more.
Get it close like we like, Cheryl. Thank you, Cheryl.
This is heavy. This is beautiful.
What's it say, Bruce?
I'm shocked.
What's it say?
It says, "Honored Bruce Swingle in appreciation of your dedicated service to Sierra County, 2014 to '21." Very unexpected, thank you so much.
Wow. Well, we're through that, we're back to the agenda.
Back to work.
You know, this return to normalcy, I don't know if we'll ever be normal again. But to be able to function and to be able to do business in a reasonable manner is just such a blessing. This is great. And when we move into the new building, we're going to have so much more room and be able to accommodate so many more folks. So, it's just great to have you all out here. So, we'll move forward. The Board of Finance and the March reconciliation, Manager Swingle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. The treasurer's office completed the reconciliation of the March numbers. And the numbers have been reconciled. I don't know if the treasurer wants to make any comments about it, but this is a monthly report that you'll get from the treasurer's office.
And we're good to go? We balance, everything reconciled?
Balance, that's the key, huh?
That's always a happy day in our office.
Do we need a motion to accept the reconciliation?
We do. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the March reconciliation.
Second. Moved and seconded, a roll call, Shelley?
Commissioner Paxton.
Yes.
Commissioner Date.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Yes.
I see that we have no old business, and so we'll move to new business, the approval to sell or auction Road Department vehicles, Manager Swingle.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, periodically throughout the year and over the years, the county does purge some of its dated equipment, antiquated equipment and vehicles. The Road Department has put together a list of vehicles that they want to, and equipment, they want to purge from the system. By statute, we have to get approval from the commissioners to do so, as well as get authorization from the state of New Mexico. We've done very well in our auctions. We typically use the .gov auction site to auction vehicles and get the best return on our investment. Staff's recommendations, if Commissioner approve the list.
Any questions, commissioners? Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, I recommend we approve the sale of Road Department vehicles.
Second.
Moved and seconded, a roll call, Shelley?
Commissioner Paxton.
Yes.
Commissioner Date.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Yes.
The motion passes. Application for state fire phones, Manager Swingle.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, what you have before you are the applications for Array, Caballo, Hillsborough, Los Palomas, Monticello, Povary Creek, Winston Chloride, and Fire Cabayo, Hillsborough, Los Palomas, Monticello, Poveri Creek, Winston Chloride, and Fire Admin. Their annual request for fire protection funds from the state. You'll see this application each year.
Any comments, Chief Tulley?
No, just, this year, it's all done online as well, so they're trying to get a little more paper lists up there.
Yeah.
So, once it's approved, then I'll be able to log in and actually do all that information online and submit it for you.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the applications for state fire funds?
Mr. Chair, move to approve the applications for the state fire funds.
I second.
Moved and seconded. A roll call, Shelley?
Commissioner Paxson.
Yes.
Commissioner Day.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Yes.
The motion is approved. We'll sign those, I'm sure. The Sierra County Health Council's scope of work, Manager Swingle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. What you have before you is the scope of work for the Sierra Health Council, for kind of the reorganization of, of that entity. These are funds from the State Department of Health that they will offer the county to pay for, basically, the consultant that we've hired. Fifty percent of the funding will come in this fiscal year. The balance will come in next fiscal year to pay the approximate $8,000 for the contract for the consultant. The county has budgeted the $8,000 in the budget already to pay the consultant, and this will be reimbursement as we meet the, the deliverables on the scope of, scope of work. It's staff's recommendation for the commission to approve.
Any questions, Commissioners?
No.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. A roll call, Shelley?
Commissioner Paxson.
Yes.
Commissioner Day.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion is approved. The DWI program application for funding, Manager Swingle and Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'll defer to George on this application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, and County Manager. We have Deputy Chief Erica Baker, Erica Baker from the Police Department. If she could come up here for us, please. For the last five years that I've been receiving these funds, and I'll tell you about it real quick, I should have been having somebody from the Police Department, because they're the ones that typically have gotten this money. This is an application for CDWI, which is Community DWI Funds, which starts with DOT, Traffic Safety, and then Community DWI Funds. This year, sometime back, pandemic had us goofed up on timing, but we're still good. I received an award letter from Traffic Safety for $3,341. And we are going to, as long as you approve it, we will get the money, and that money this year will go to the Police Department. One would ask, what about the sheriff? And the reality is, the sheriff already has $5,000 of funding for their DWI operations. It will be coming in FY22, provided those funds, which I will find out tomorrow, are approved. And because it comes from distribution, it's, it'll be set in stone. The state police will also get $5,000 for their DWI operations. But I didn't wanna leave out the Police Department. They do, they, they, she has officers that work for her who do make a lot of, she has a good career, and I'm very happy for that. And, and her officers work very well with, with my staff, and it's greatly appreciated. She's going to tell you about what they're going to do with the money, and then we would ask for your support and approval of the application. Deputy Chief?
So, I wanna thank George for putting me on the spot today, 'cause he didn't tell me I was gonna be talking, but, thanks, George. So, I'm always excited when anybody calls me and tells me that they have free money for our department, 'cause of course, it doesn't come out of our budget. So, we use that money to the best we can. That will benefit my officers, the community, and anything that will help them in their investigations for DWI. Which, that leaves us kinda limited on what kind of equipment I can do to justify that. So, here recently, a bunch of our digital cameras went down, so I went ahead, we applied to purchase some new ones, which will assist our guys in DUI crashes, any kind of open containers, or anything that we need to take photographs of for evidentiary purposes. I also put in to purchase, we just purchased brand-new ToughBooks, which is the laptops for our officers to take with them in the field. The only problem is, we can't take them in the cars, because they don't have anything to hold those in. So, I did also request for some kind of protective bags to put in their vehicles, so they can safely take those. And then we can do reports and investigations right there on scene if we need to. I also put in for smaller flashlights, and this will also aid our guys, instead of having to use the larger flashlights we have in their DUI or field sobriety tests on scene. We also put in for the LED batons, which will aid in traffic control, in case we have any DUI crashes or any DUI investigations at night, to keep our officers safe. And I stand for any questions about that.
Questions?
No.
You did real good at the impromptu speech.
Thank you. And just for last, I know last time, we purchased the portable intoxicizers for, we, I think we purchased like two or three for our officers as well, to carry them in their cars, so they could do PB tests for juveniles, or anybody we have that we're not sure if they're completely intoxicated, or if we can get them, someone to get a ride home to see where we are in arrest-wise. So, that's helped us out immensely as well.
You also got the DUI.
Yeah, so, as far as that too, we also purchased the DUI goggles and the medical marijuana goggles, which helps us in educating the schools. Before we got shut down for the pandemic, we put on presentations, especially for the seniors during their, their last weeks there at the school. And so, they, they know what it feels like, which I'm sure some of them do anyways, but they know what it feels like to be under the influence of marijuana or, or drugs. And the DUI office also helps us, the compliance office helps us, as well as the DA's office, and they ride around in the golf carts, trying to simulate what it would be like to try to drive and operate being under the influence, so.
Good program.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, you can simulate the DWI aspect of it. How do you simulate the munchies?
We can do that one.
All right. Thank you, Chief Baker. Is there a, a motion concerning the DWI program application for funding?
Mr. Chair, move to approve the DWI program application.
Second.
Moved and seconded. A roll call, Shelley?
Commissioner Paxson.
Yes.
Commissioner Day.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Yes.
The motion is approved. It's kinda nice having you here, Chief Baker. We like the cooperation and the coordination, and we look forward to seeing you more in the future. So, thanks for coming. Asset management policy, Manager Swingle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As a result of audit finding, capital assets, we've corrected the issue with the audit. However, we wanted to put it in stone, so we drafted the asset management plan. This plan basically deals with the, the acquisition, the, the tracking, and maintaining depreciation, and ultimately, the disposition of our capital assets for Sierra County. It's a pretty comprehensive plan that will go, carry a lot of value during the audit process this year. It's staff's recommendation that the commission approve this plan to track our, our physical assets.
I think it's a great move. Those audit findings are pernicious. They're a needle under the skin, and I'm, I'm, I think that with this, it's, it's very well-written in my review, and we'll be able to track those assets, and with the limits set, it eliminates the confusion. It's a good plan.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to accept the asset management policy?
Mr. Chair, move to approve the asset, asset management policy?
Second.
Moved and seconded. A roll call, Shelley?
Commissioner Paxson.
Yes.
Commissioner Day.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion is approved. So, we'll go to the proclamation for May to meet Motorcycle Awareness Month. Manager Swingle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The county has been contacted and requested to create a proclamation declaring May Motorcycle Awareness Month. It's kinda fitting with, last week, we had a recent, you know, fatality involving a motorcycle scooter. If the Commissioners approve this proclamation, we'll get disseminated to the appropriate special interest group, it's a motorcycle enthusiast group that has requested the, the proclamation.
Yeah, motorcycles are hard to see, and they don't, they don't take up a lot of visual space. We used to ride quite a lot, and had a friend, that little lady pulled out in front of me, and T-bonder, and he was without a helmet, and he skidded on his face, underwent several surgeries, and that was when we quit riding motorcycles. So, it's very important, and they're a great way to see the country and go down the road, so may we all be more aware. Is there a motion for the proclamation?
Mr. Chair, move to approve the May to be motorcycle awareness, awareness, excuse me, month proclamation.
Second.
Moved and seconded. A roll call, Shelley?
Commissioner Paxson.
Yes.
Commissioner Day.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion is approved, and we'll, we'll get that out along with the other entities that, that do that. So, we're to contracts, the mine operating plan for New Mexico State Land Office, Manager Swingle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. What you have before you is the mine operation plan. For the road department is wanting to take some stockpile of aggregate that's just off of, I believe it's Exit 89, if I recall, and use that for road projects. This money's already stockpiled there. What I did not want to have happen was, the last time the road department went and got a mine operation permitted, the Commissioners were not fully aware of the, the site and location, the one that was near Elephant Butte, Lake Shore Highland area. So, we put it on the agenda for the Commissioners to, to entertain the idea and have a discussion about it for your awareness. There's no mining involved. This stuff's already been mined, it's stockpiled, and the road department would just get access to it and, and haul it as, as necessary for their projects.
It, it's already been mailed, Billy. It's, it's ready to use?
Yes, sir. It's a three different stockpile.
Three different, yep.
It's you.
Yeah.
And it's an old state, so it's a state land office. All we're gonna have to do is put up a $7,000 deposit, pretty much, to pay a little bit of fee per ton that we use. And then we get that all back after we're out of the pit.
Will, will we be responsible for rehab, once the, the site is cleared?
Oh, yes, we will, but there's gonna be very little rehab.
Okay.
All the roads are already existing, going in.
Yeah.
I think we'll probably, new gate, new gate up.
Any questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the MOP for New Mexico State Land Office Construction Materials Lease.
Second.
Moved and seconded. A roll call, Shelley?
Commissioner Paxson.
Yes.
Commissioner Day.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion is approved. Modification of a grant or agreement with the USDA Forest Service, and this is for road maintenance on the Sebola, Manager Swingle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. What you have before you is the modification of the grant agreement. We have an agreement in place with the Sebola Forest Service to provide maintenance on the road. The road is one at Red Rock Exit, so I think Billy said it's about seven miles in, in length through the Sebola, and they've added a little more revenue for the project. It's $3,424.50 for the year. So, they're actually gonna give us a little compensation for the road maintenance that the road department's doing.
Adequate to do the job, Billy? Okay.
Mr. Chair, permit. Is that the one that comes out at Monticello, Billy?
Yep. Yep, and then comes out at 25, makes a loop. All right. Now, if we could convince the healer to start paying us for road maintenance, that'd be great. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, move to approve the agreement with the USDA Forest Service for maintenance.
Moved and seconded. A roll call, Shelley?
Commissioner Paxson.
Yes.
Commissioner Day.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion is approved. Purchase of police vehicle for Stone Garden Grant, Sheriff Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This was a, during, last year's budget preparation, we returned the, the, or, or, forewent getting the, the funds that would normally purchase a vehicle for, for the sheriff's office, from the county's general fund. However, we still had the Stone Garden Grant, and, and every year, we're basically purchasing a vehicle out of that, out of that grant money. This is the Stone Garden Grant that we received from the United States Border Patrol in assisting with interdictions out on the, on the interstate. Again, we don't, and, don't engage in any actual enforcement of immigration laws. We just do what we would normally do in the enforcement of state laws, and should we come across someone who's suspected of being in the country illegally, we just turn that information over to the Border Patrol. But they give us a substantial amount of money, and, and out of that money, we, we're basically trying to alleviate some of the burden on the county that the county would normally have in taking one of the vehicles and, and just purchasing it with this grant. We were actually able to, I think, locate the only interceptor SUV in the state of New Mexico. It's provided by one of the, the state contract holders. So, we're gonna be able to take possession of this almost immediately, get it over to MHQ to get the equipment put on it, and, and get that out on the, on the street, and replace one of our, our aging vehicles that we currently have. So, I'll turn that over to Jocelyn, if she has any more information.
Morning, Jocelyn.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Glad this is a normal setting again. I would just, it's very simple. We didn't get the vehicle 'cause of COVID, 'cause we weren't sure at the time, and now that we're able to move forward, we're moving forward with purchasing the vehicle, and that has the accessories, which are under the threshold, that are gonna be compiled in. So, the cost of the vehicle will be a little bit higher, once they put in all the accessories from MHQ and Advanced Communications. So, it's just a request to see if you would approve it, so we can move forward.
Okay. Any questions?
I got one question, and for the sheriff. Is there any restricted use on this vehicle? Can it only be used for Stone Garden operations?
Um, no, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Day, no. This is essentially, we, if we get out of the Stone Garden Program, we would likely, likely have to return the assets back to the government. But, yeah, we can, we can use it up to, I believe, 75% of the use can be for, for just regular patrols.
Okay.
But we just have to show each year that we are, we are putting miles on it and, and using it for, for Stone Garden operations, in addition to our own operations.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the purchase of a police vehicle for Stone Garden Grant.
Second.
Moved and seconded. A roll call, Shelley?
Commissioner Paxson.
Yes.
Commissioner Day.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Jocelyn and Chair. Emergency Management and Flood Services MOU, Manager Swingle, and Mr. Atwell, you gonna come up?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, what you have before you is an agreement. It was actually drafted by Williamsburg, requesting, you know, the services for, for emergency management and technical assistance from the flood director. The cost of this, or the, the revenue that would be generated, would be, be on an hourly rate. It'll be at the hourly rate at the time. The hourly rate plus benefits, our packages, our load is about 34%. And then I would add another 1% or 2%, just before the, for the vehicle, and time, and the equipment that he's, either one of the departments would use to provide that service. But it would be at the time rate versus entering a number in today. They just included reasonable hourly rate. That should be the hourly rate at the time, plus the, the benefits and equipment factored in. So, you're looking at something around in the neighborhood of $50 an hour, or thereabout. Ballpark number, I would give. Uh, this agreement has been ran by both Travis and Paul for their particular fields, and they have no issues with the agreement.
Okay, good.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Dave, any, have you seen this? Any opinion on it?
Chairman, Commissioner Day, I have no, I have no revisions to the proposed agreement, except that, that was, that was raised by Bruce here, or by Mr. Swingle. I don't have it in word format, so I'm not able to incorporate that change into the actual document. So, if we could request that from the clerk in Williamsburg, we'll go ahead and make that revision and submit it for your consideration execution. that revision and submit it for your consideration and execution.
How much work you got to do in Williamsburg?
Lately, not much. In fact, they've already under MOU for me to provide floodplain management services, and you're talking maybe once a month.
I see where they've applied for some grants for some flood damage repairs.
Yeah, that's on their existing arroyos that run through town.
Yeah, yeah. And are you working with New Mexico Department of Transportation on the drainages across the interstate, or?
We're starting to right now. In fact, with them doing bridge replacements down south, we're, I've already been talking with their engineers of, when they do their pilings, they're going to have to start redirecting them because, especially like Trujillo, that one actually shoots to the north, and that's what causes all the damage. So, we're, we're working actually pretty well with DOT.
When are they starting their construction project to redo the exit there, 75? That's.
I haven't heard a firm date on that one yet.
Is there flood design that you're going to be coordinating with in that?
Yeah, they always, the head of schedule send me their entire engineering plan.
Okay. Any questions?
No, Mr. Chairman, I just think we need to put some language in there clarifying that the use of vehicles and equipment need to be a part of that hourly rate.
The hourly rate, yes. Yep. We'll get that from Ms. Cordova, and you'll get that.
Some stop, Mr. Chairman, move to approve the MOU with the suggested changes.
Second. There's a motion and a second, a roll call, Shelley.
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion is approved. MOU regarding proposed roadway improvement at the Spaceport, Manager Swingle.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. This is an amendment to the existing agreement we've had in place since December of 2016. They're continuing, for Sierra County, this is, only pertains to AO 13 or Uphem Road. The agreement is between the BLM, Doñana County and Sierra County, and the Spaceport, as well as the New Mexico State Historical Preservation Officer. And they're continuing to do their work. It should have expired, they just didn't get it all done. They didn't indicate to us, but I'm sure the pandemic had some impact on their timing and execution of their work. So, it's staff's recommendation that you approve the amendment to the agreement, give them an extension of time.
Any questions, Commissioners?
No.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the amendment regarding the MOU between the proposed roadway improvement project at the Spaceport.
Second.
Moved and seconded, a roll call, Shelley.
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
The MOU is approved, we'll sign it. We're to resolutions, ordinances, and proclamations. Resolution 109-072, the Los Palomas brush fire truck application, Manager Swingle.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Los Palomas is looking at purchasing a brush truck for the fire department. They've contacted NMFA, gone through the process of getting the loan for, and this will be paid by fire funds over time to purchase, to purchase the truck. This resolution is a requirement of NMFA that the commission approve the authorization for financial assistance.
Chief Thule?
Yes, Palomas is out of debt now. They actually paid off their other stuff that they had, so this is going to help them. It's already been approved by the State Fire Marshal's Office. So, we are going to put a down payment on it. I don't know how much, we're going to see how much they have here at the end of the year as to how much they can put a down payment on, and then we'll work for the finance on the rest of the vehicle for them.
Is this going to utilize the hypersonic technology, or is this?
No, this one, this one was before that process, so, but this is a brush truck that they've been looking at for quite a while and got approval from the State Fire Marshal's Office.
Okay. Questions?
None.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve Resolution 109-072.
Second.
Moved and seconded, a roll call, Shelley.
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Ordinance 21-002, restricting open and controlled burns in unincorporated areas, Manager Swingle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Prior to the commission meeting, we had a public hearing on this ordinance. This is an ordinance that the county typically brings forward about this time every year for consideration of the commission. I think that the Emergency Services Director spoke about the dire drought conditions that we have countywide and in southern New Mexico, and the need for, for the burn ban. It doesn't totally ban burning, but it identifies and describes a permit process for the public to follow to conduct their burning in the future, as long as we're in the drought conditions. It also authorizes the county manager to terminate the ordinance at the end when the conditions change, without having to come before the commission and do an official action by the board. The permitting process is the individuals would contact the Emergency Services Director in the county, and he would evaluate the circumstances. He'd notify the district in which this fire, this fire would take place, notify SCOTUS so that everybody's on the same page, and then either review it and approve it or deny it, or just delay it until conditions change and that, for the environmental conditions change at that time. So, it's a process we followed for the last several years, and I'll stand for any questions Commissioners may have.
So, if we wanted to burn, we would call dispatch, and then dispatch would get ahold of, or?
No, call Paul.
Call Paul.
Call Paul.
We'd call Paul directly.
You'd call this office.
Okay.
You'd call this office under regular.
You tried that before.
I know. I did.
If the Commissioners adopt this ordinance today, due to the exigent circumstances, the ordinance would go into effect immediately, so not the 30-day delay.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the burn ordinance.
Second.
Moved and seconded, a roll call, Shelley.
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
That resolution is approved. So, we've got an executive session, is there a move to?
Mr. Chairman, we have one more.
One new resolution.
One more resolution.
Oh, I skipped one, didn't I? Delineating the authority of the interim county manager. Thank you, Vice Chair Day. Manager Swingle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. You identify the authorities of the county manager on what contracts or agreements the manager can approve versus what has to go before the commission, as well as suspending authority. What can the county manager approve prior, you know, before it has to come to the commission? County attorney has drafted the language, and it looks very similar to the language of the authorities that you extended, extended to county manager, me. So, it, all you're doing is continuing the existing authorities that the county manager has, extending that to the interim county manager, Serena Bar Two.
Questions?
No. I think it's just important we continue as normal as possible.
We need to authorize you to do your job.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve Resolution 109-074.
A second.
Moved and seconded, a roll call, Shelley.
Commissioner Paxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Day?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
That motion passes. Serena, we're going to really look forward to having you here with us and working with you. It's a homecoming, so we're glad you're here, and again, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I appreciate that. It's an honor.
Do we need to address executive session?
Mr. Chairman, there is no need for executive session today.
Okay. So, we'll forego that.
Sorry, Travis.
Darn. Open season, accurate, well, we don't have that. So, the next county meeting of the commission will be May 18th, and we'll look forward to that meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, move to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded, we are adjourned.